For the Committee of the Whole, for Monday, February 7th, can we have the roll?
Chairman Looby.
Here.
Alderman James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Woodman.
Here.
Alderman Morris. Absent, Alderman Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Schonider.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Eight present, one absent, Mr. Chairman, the other form.
Thank you, and now we're looking for approval of the minutes of the October 4th meeting, are there any changes or corrections, or can we have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Tim moved in second, it all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We're gonna now have the open meetings and Freedom of Information Act presentation by our city attorney, Vic.
Well, not quite, because he's somewhere on, I think Route 41, trying to work his way out.
To our review of city boards and commissions, presented by our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chairman, and members of the Committee of the Whole, where did Ramesh go? I just gave something out. I just gave something to put on the, hey, can you put that down, please? Thank you. In your packet, staff has prepared a matrix listing out all of the city committees and advisory groups that we have within the city of Lake Forest. And most of these committees have been developed over a period of time for one reason or another, but as you can see, some have been appointed by the mayor with the concurrence of the council, some by the mayor, some are advisory to the city manager. And what the staff would like to do is sort of revisit with the city council, the committee structure, particularly those that we've highlighted in blue, because as Vic will tell you when he does arrive, any board or commission that is appointed by the mayor and/or the concurrence of the city council is officially a public body, that officially needs to comply with the Open Meetings Act, that officially needs to have minutes of their meetings. And then as a policy, the city has been trying to put all of this information on the website, and it also feeds into the GovQA discussion that we've had, so on and so forth. And so what we're trying to do is really get a sense from the council as to which of these are, we'll call them, public bodies in which you want to have open meetings, open to the public, which ones are more advisory, that they're doing some work now and will come back to the council and/or another board or commission at a later date, and so forth, and which ones we need to have minutes on the websites and so forth, because I'm also a little sensitive to the work, the administrative work that goes into staffing all of these various boards and commissions. So to just use, I think, the first one at the top, which is the CBD advocacy group, this was actually appointed by Mayor Rumel. But we have, because of some of their conversations and discussions, we really haven't been having open meetings to the public, we haven't been publishing them, we have it on the website, but in fact, we're not, for the most part, encouraging people to come in, because sometimes we're talking about individual properties, which would be very appropriate for executive session. Same with the Bera redevelopment committee that Alderman Woodman chairs, it's an ad hoc committee of the city council, but up to this point in time, we really haven't been noticing it as a public meeting per se, for some of the other ones, we haven't been taking minutes from that meeting. And I guess that was sort of, again, just using those as examples, what is the real intent of the council, and maybe we need to go back and change how it was appointed so that we can make sure that we're in complete compliance with the Open Meetings Act.
How do we change that appointment?
Well, technically, and if Vic was here, I hope he would concur, but basically, I think we'd have to go back and say that these would be advisory committees, much like we just did with the cultural corridor committee, which is a city manager-appointed committee, and so it's advisory to the city manager, and then I will at some point in time be making a full report to the city council, but I think we'd go back and try and clean each of these up if that was truly the intent.
If we call it advisory and you appoint it, then we don't have to do open meetings.
That's correct.
I'm not so sure, I was just reading Vic's information, and it seemed that on page three, and I don't want to blow any privileges here, so I'm gonna be careful about this. One of the, the second bullet point, for those of us who are looking at this, the second bullet point and the second bullet point, says that...
Listen carefully, Vic, this question's geared or directed at you.
I'll wait till Vic sits down. It seems that under the second bullet point and the second bullet point, if this organization, whether it's appointed by whomever, is accountable to the city council, then it seems as if the Open Meetings Act applies. Now Vic can elaborate on that, whether my read is overly generous or not, but I don't know which one of these 33 listed organizations are not really accountable to the city council.
Well, let me first note that the standards as to whether a particular organization is in fact a public body and subject to the Open Meetings Act, there's not a bright line test, there's actually a number of different factors that come into play. So you have to scrape a lot more than just the surface to have a good understanding of that. I would be hesitant without going a little bit below the surface to make any judgments about some of the, some of the bodies that are identified.
What we were just using as an example, the cultural corridor committee, which is advisory to the city manager, and Alderman Grumhouse asked, what if, for example, the CBD advocacy group, they wanted to make more advisory, so that it didn't fall into the Public Meetings Act and so forth, how would you go about doing that?
One way of going about it would simply be to decommission, if you would, the body as a committee established by the city council, and then have it reformulated by the city manager. One of the examples that I think about, in addition to the, to the cultural corridor body that Bob has set up, was the, the post office task force. That was, that was a body that was created for purposes of making some advice on it, but it didn't have any formal structure, it was simply identifying certain individuals who have expertise and have roles elsewhere with the city to take on that task, ultimately to make, to make some recommendations, whether to the manager or the mayor. One of the other things that you'll often see is that, and I'm going to use an example which is perhaps not unfamiliar, if you think about when Ronald Reagan was president, he had his so-called kitchen cabinet. None of them had any portfolio to speak of in a governmental sense, all of them gave advice to the president on matters that may have had to bear with the governmental functions, but they would not have been the type of thing subject to the Open Meetings Act. Likewise, you know, if, if Mayor Cowie were to establish a task force in name, but just simply people that he chooses to consult with, even if he announces it to the council, that, that, I won't say won't, but likely would not trigger an Open Meetings Act requirement as a public body.
But if they then come and present to the council?
I'm sorry?
If that group then comes and presents to the council?
Well, keep in mind, any individual can come and present to the council, and one of the things that, that, you know, that the new law provides is that we have to provide that, that opportunity. We've always done it as a matter of practice, but we will have to do that. The fact that somebody may have, may have a greater stake, or may have a greater recognition before the council in what they say, doesn't make what they say more governmental than not. Any citizen can come up and speak, the fact that someone may have spent some considerable time on it, and may have even done so at the request of the mayor, or the city manager, doesn't make them a public body for purposes of the Open Meetings Act. And again, there are multiple layers on this, so I don't want to suggest that, you know, you have a rule of thumb that will always govern.
The ad hoc committees that we've put in place, I can think of two that I've served on, should those, I'm not saying they weren't, or they were, but should those have been formally under the Open Meetings Act? Or would they have under the new law?
Again, sometimes you have to look at the composition. And I'm sorry, Alderman Grumhouse, I don't remember which ones, not that I don't pay attention to all the things that you do. But I just came from a two-hour drive in the snow, and my, my, my mind might get a little bit short.
The ad hoc finance committee where we looked at home rule.
That, that clearly was not, that was, that was something that, in fact, if I recall, you sat on that committee prior to your service on the, on the council. That was something that, you were looking at something as an advisory group of citizens, just commenting to the city. Now, if I recall, the mayor did, did gather the individuals who served, but it was not done at any kind of action of the city council. The city council was aware of, but did not charge you with any responsibility.
Well, Vic, let me ask maybe a clarifying question. Using the post office redevelopment committee, since you mentioned that, that was appointed by, I think it was Mayor Rumel, just before, I think he left office, with three at-large residents, in addition to Kent Novit, also sitting on the board. I don't think that, at the time of the appointment, it was clarified whether this was a public body or not. So I guess, from this point going forward, and then looking back, if we need to correct any of the ones that we currently have in place, is what is that distinction that the council needs to make when we want to make sure that the record is clear that this is a public body pursuant to Illinois law, or is not a public body pursuant to Illinois law?
The distinctions, I think, that we should be making will relate mostly as to the means by which we form it. Certainly, if we're forming it by any kind of ordinance of the council, that will make it a public, a public body.
So if either the, the people are approved by the council, or the, the direction of what's to be discussed and what's to be worked on is approved by the council, that would make it a public body?
I think, as, again, as a rule of thumb, if the council is the one charging it with a responsibility, we should presume that it will be a public body, and it will have Open Meetings Act obligations.
On this list that we have here, there's a column that says, "Open Meetings Act Compliance," some have yes, some have no. Is that, for the ones that have no, does that mean it's required, but it's not in compliance, or does that mean it's not required to comply?
I interpreted, I didn't formulate this, but I interpreted this as being that they're not required to comply.
Okay.
That's correct.
Some of them I don't think would have anything really to do with the city outside of giving money. All of the foundations need to be an arm's length away anyway, so Troya, Eloa, the senior foundation, we don't have the Gorton Foundation on here, is one more of them, but, and the Recreation Friends of the Parks, I think that's a further foundation. So those really are an arm's length away from city committees anyway, aren't they?
But, but stuff like CBD advocacy and Bera redevelopment, didn't we have a stated purpose of what they were gonna do and what we were looking for?
The city formed Bera, the council formed it.
And Bera, I know we had discussions about who was gonna be on it, so...
Right, and that's why I think we've brought this list together to you, to say, we want to make sure we're in complete compliance with the Open Meetings Act, number one, but number two is, is that depending on which direction the city council wants to go, either to make it a formal public body or not, then we're gonna have to go back and correct things.
Right, and I would say that's, those are two that we, and maybe that's what all the blue ones are, two that we need to correct.
Yeah, the ones in blue are the ones where I think staff is suggesting that we're uncomfortable.
Isn't best practice to just err on the side of...
I would say yes. I mean, we should, we should always be trying either to make sure we're on one side or the other of a fairly bright line, and if we're not sure, just follow the Open Meetings Act requirement.
And I'm sensitive, Bob, on the staff requirement, I understand, I mean, it's not easy to have to have all these meetings and take minutes and, you know, but I think we're a lot better off doing it.
And again, again, some of these, I don't know off the top of my head, their composition and the like, but some, we have sometimes had committees which are largely comprised of staff members, where a member of the council or a member of one of the other standing subsidiary bodies of the, of the council may participate. Again, I think you have to look at the, a number of different factors, one of which would be, who's on it? And if it's primarily a staff body, for example, and maybe a member of the commission and a member of the council, that may be something that is on the non-public body side of the line. But again, I, I think because of the non-formulaic way of making the judgment, you do have to look beneath the, the surface on, on some of these to have greater certainty.
I guess the other question, and Alderman Marsh, I would agree with you, in general, the other question, though, I guess goes back to what Vic was saying, is what is the purpose of the committee? And let's just use the Bera redevelopment committee, is, was the purpose to really start having formal public meetings and allowing the public to come in and have dialogue with Harris Bank and so forth about what their plans were? Or is it more of exploratory group, if you will? And if that was indeed the case, then even though, I think there's multiple aldermen that are on that committee, did it need to be that? Or is it more just an extension of staff having conversations with them? Same with sort of the post office committee, and, you know, even the Laurel Avenue Committee, since we're sort of in a hiatus here, an extended hiatus, as to going forward, what is the role of that group? Because practically, what we can do is post and notice everything, but most of these meetings, you're gonna be able to go into executive session. And so the public wouldn't need to, or wouldn't be able to participate anyways, but it's just gonna be all the administrative hoops that you have to go through to meet the Open Meetings Act, if that's not what the original intent was of the city council in the first place.
I don't think the CBD advocacy group really had an intention of that, it was to get some experts together to kind of take a look at 30,000 square feet over the city, and give us some feedback as to what the industry is doing in real estate in the rest of the world. So I don't really see that, even for the length of the committee with what's there, I mean, they're kind of making some recommendations on parking times and other things, but it's not really locking us into anything, and I think it's really kind of just a look advisory. I don't see it being a changing the downtown in any direct way, they're not, they don't, they don't have a goal to rewrite a plan for new buildings or changes or anything else. That was my impression of when we put that one together.
I guess one of the issues I would question about these, and, you know, on the one hand, I look at these in blue, and I say, let's, I'd rather they all be advisory. The question mark comes in, though, is if, if some of these committees are actually negotiating, you know, Laurel Avenue redevelopment, not really doing much right now, but it is, you know, there was an RFP out there, right, where they were looking for stuff, and they had, they needed to have the right to negotiate, otherwise, and, you know, I'd say thing with, same thing with Bera, now maybe Bera at this point is more in a, in a preliminary stage, but eventually we're gonna need some sort of committee with Bera that figures stuff out with, with Harris. Now ultimately, it's gonna come back to the council, but there's still gonna be preliminary negotiation going on. And so I, I guess I would say, in that situation, can we really just make them advisory if they're, have the ability to commit to stuff that, and negotiate stuff that, you know, ultimately the council's probably gonna abide by?
You know, this is much more than just a matter of technicalities, because if we don't do it right, some of the city's actions can be challenged because we didn't do it right. And there's also certain criminal possibilities for not doing it right. Now, to me, those are two pretty good reasons to get it right. And, I mean, I am glad we're having this conversation, because this one puts in front of me the risks of not, not doing it properly, and I think we, we have to really focus on this and get it done properly. And before, between now and whenever we do clarify it, I think we should direct the commissions and organizations to comply with the Open Meetings Act, so that there is no risk until we change anything.
I mean, you know, some of these committees, we're saying they're advisory, but yet on our agenda, we list them, we have council committee reports where the Royal and Western Avenue Redevelopment Committee and the Transportation and Safety Committee are delivering reports, so, you know, I, we're walking a fine line there.
Right. No, I agree, and that's, that's why we've got it on the agenda this evening, because...
And, yeah, I mean, I think that the policy question is an important one that you need to, to wrestle with. Certainly, the fact that someone makes a report doesn't imbue it with a status of a public body. For example, let's just say we had an issue that came up, and the mayor directed our first ward alderman to look at it more closely, and you came back after having looked at it more closely, Alderman, Grumhouse, and Novit, and reported back to the council. The fact that the mayor directed you at a public meeting, you're both public officials on a public body, but not a majority of a quorum, and the fact that you're reporting back to the council, none of that likely constitutes enough to make you a public body for purposes of the Open Meetings Act. So there, there, you know, again, there are many different shadings of this, that you have to really examine it, and I don't think that you can simply pick one and say, oh, that makes it a public body.
I guess what I feel like is on these ones in blue, is that we need staff in conjunction with you, Vic, to go and make a preliminary recommendation to us, of what you think we should do with this.
Yeah, and I think that's appropriate.
Work with the mayor on this, I mean, I think, most of these, we're probably gonna have to make Open Meeting Act compliant. You know, there may be one or two that we feel like that they're advisory, but, you know, again, I think that's sort of a legal question, I think Alderman Woodman brings up the right point, which is, you know, this is a technicality, but it's a technicality we gotta get right, because there's liability associated with it, and it's certainly something that, that, you know, we don't want to be making mistakes on.
Well, I will say that staff will also be reaching out to a few of you, because you're on these committees, and I think it's important to get your input as to which way to go, because I, for most of these, I could argue either way. And so it's a matter of, then, how do we modify it to bring it into compliance with whatever it is that we want to do?
But, yeah, and it's interesting, I mean, you know, Don and I both are on the Laurel Avenue, but the whole committee is formed to sell a piece of property which is subject to executive session, and, we could, in theory, as you mentioned before, we could open up every meeting and say, okay, we're now gonna go into executive session, thank you very much.
And each of those Laurel Avenue meetings, we've had, have had public involvement and public minutes.
Tons of it, yeah, and publication.
And I think we're encouraged that, that's so...
I, I would agree, I just think in gen, I mean, except when it comes down to, obviously, David, if we're in negotiations as a, as a city, with either, like to Vic's example, the first ward is, you know, the two aldermen are leading some negotiating team, and that's not public.
Right.
And I mean, we have to be able to have, the city needs to be able to, to execute its business.
I guess I would just say, when I look at this, I would think CBD advocacy and transportation safety could be too, they're advisory.
Right.
Right.
I'm not sure those need to be formally, and I don't, CBD advocacy, where we have, we have, are you on, who's on that one? Are you on?
No.
Do we even have, we don't even have Alderman on that, right?
Nobody from the council.
Those would be two that I would think, you know, we're gonna welcome public, I mean, you know, transportation has been very out, and safety has been very much out there, and we're gonna welcome public involvement, but I guess I'm, I'm not sure that they need to be a formal committee where we're, you know, putting up, scheduling meetings and keeping minutes. But, you know, again, I think that's something that we should look for feedback from staff on, and from the mayor, obviously, and that one in particular, since...
I think you raise certainly very valid points, and I would, I would certainly defer to Vic's input as we hire him to do so, as a third-party legal representative, so, and I know this gets very technical, and certainly there's a lot of pieces of it there, we have to be very careful on. I do think that, as a community, though, and this is in a broad sense, though, that we are, in my, my connections with a lot of other committees, we are certainly much more formal in all of the things that we do than probably many, many other communities. Doesn't mean that we can't be better, or shouldn't be better, or that we have to make sure that we, you know, we are to the letter of the law, which we will, but a lot of those meetings, like the traffic committee, I know, we do keep minutes, you know, there are minutes that are certainly circulated within that group, and there's, there is certainly an opportunity for people to come if they wish. So I will defer to Vic to go through, I think that's a good recommendation, to have our legal representative go through each one of those and give us your input, and if we have to tweak it and change it, then certainly we will do that. I think all of us here want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and that we're following the letter of the law, and that none of us want to step our foot in any area that would certainly put us into any violation of any part of the law.
Good, you have direction there?
Yep.
I think so. Vic, is there anything more you want to talk about in the Freedom of Information Act issue word here at the start?
Yeah, again, my apologies for the delay. Just a couple of things that I think, from your perspectives, as members of the council, I wanted to highlight from the materials that, that we circulated, and that is really just when your antenna should go up, as to whether or not a conversation is an Open Meetings Act conversation, that you need to make sure formalities are satisfied. One of the things I, I think I should first note, the definition of a meeting in the Open Meetings Act isn't necessarily the same as what a meeting would be under other circumstances. You know, we just all, we're reading press accounts about the issue of residency with, with Rahm Emanuel. Residency means some things in one context, some things in another. Meetings likewise mean something in one context and some things in another. The memorandum focuses on meetings in the Open Meetings Act context. You could have a meeting, even though you don't have a quorum of the body, so long as there's a majority of a quorum. But from the perspective of the body itself, it can't be a meeting at which action can occur unless you have a quorum. So when is a meeting not a meeting? When it's an Open Meetings Act meeting, but it doesn't have a quorum, that you can act, you know, in those circumstances. And we actually had one of our bodies encounter that recently, where they published it, a majority of a quorum showed up, but not a quorum. So it was a meeting for Open Meetings Act purposes, it was not a meeting for purposes of that body, that can happen. So I caution you that the words can have different meanings in different contexts. For your purposes, under the Open Meetings Act, which is the one that I, I want you to be most attuned to, because as Alderman Woodman noted, it does have some consequences, including potential criminal consequences, if ever you're in a communication, and that's not just when you're in the same physical location, but if any of you might be involved in a communication electronically, somebody on the phone to people together, people on email, people in a chat room, if you're talking about city business, and more than two of you are doing it at the same time, then you ought to be making sure somebody exits that conversation quickly, because it should not be happening if you have not complied with all of the Open Meetings Act notices and procedures. You know, there could be times, you know, you're in the grocery store line, and it just so happens that two of you are, are there, and you're, you're starting to chat about something... starting to chat about something that's upcoming, and then a third one comes up and that conversation continues. That's one that, get the antenna up, and one of you should say, got to go. That's, that's just simply, you know, something that can and occasionally does happen. The trickiest one of all has to do when you're dealing with electronic communications. I know that, I've probably said this more times than you ever want to hear, never press reply to all. And, and the reason for that is obvious, is that as soon as you do that, that means somebody has communicated once and you've just now had a second communication, and there's the risk that you've now infected that communication. So, I will say it again, never press reply to all. If, if there are things that even seem to be somewhat inconsequential, scheduling of a meeting, I would still suggest, though that may not fall within the Open Meetings Act context, you use the hub-and-spoke approach, have the staff person be the one that collects all the comments and then shoots it back out to you. And again, don't reply to all. I, I think that is probably, that is probably the biggest risk of violation, plus the, the very inadvertent one, as I mentioned before, such as the grocery store line. For the most part, when you all gather, if it's done in a formal setting, it's already accomplished through staff, what notices and what publications have to have been made. So I think that you're safe. I guess the last thing I would suggest is, if you're desirous of convening some kind of meeting, always do it through the staff, because then they're, they're going to be, I hope, attuned and, and better filtered to make sure that all the Open Meetings Act requirements are satisfied. I will stop there, open it for questions if you have any. I can go further, I can go a lot further, but I suspect that nobody really needs or wants that.
I have a question. If I have been communicating electronically with another alderman, and so we have both of our comments back and forth, and one of us then sends it to a third alderman, is that a potential Open Meetings Act violation?
And the email issue is, is one that has two components. One is participation. So in the, in the respect of participation, that is potentially a problem. But the other one is a timing question. The statute calls for it to be contemporaneous communication. It doesn't define what contemporaneous is, but I would say that if, if you're dealing within a period of time of, say, less than two hours, that is a precarious time period within which to be concerned about. I, I would discourage that. I can't tell you that there's any case law in Illinois that determines that that would be a violation. But again, this is one that you don't want to be peeking over the edge to see how, how deep the abyss might be.
Just pulling back, during the course of the last year, we had some issues that involved some of the other boards. And as an alderman, if I'm seeking information from members of one of the boards, am I limited then to, on that board, have a quorum, or how do I add into that?
Important and good question in, in two respects. If you're simply communicating with multiple members of the board at different times...
Okay.
The fact that the two, that, that you're a member of, of one public body and they're a member of another public body doesn't aggregate into a public meeting. But if you're communicating contemporaneously with more than a majority of a quorum of that other body, that other body needs to have been properly noticed in order to have that type of communication. So, you know, if, if you meet with three members of a body that would be a majority of a quorum of that body, you're not in violation of the Open Meetings Act. But if they haven't gone through the proper notice provisions, they may be.
Okay. So if I notify, I say, three members of the zoning board potentially?
Do so individually rather than collectively, I would suggest. And again, if you have individual communications, those are not problematic unless you then start, as, you know, the example that Alderman Palmer gave, you then start sharing those communications so it starts to aggregate.
Yeah.
But I could send an email to Ken and the head of the zoning board, in the same email, and that wouldn't be a violation?
Yes, that's correct. Because at, at no point has a majority of a quorum of a particular public body been part of that communication.
And when we hear about governors and presidents and mayors getting together with five or six representatives or council members to hammer something out, are they just violating the law?
Um, I, I...
Depends.
I, I, yeah, thank you.
Executive.
Yes, it does depend.
I'll positively, he's not by the way doing it.
First, the first question is whether you are, whether the, the people who are meeting are subject to the Open Meetings Act. And if they are all members of the, the same body, you know, let's just say that Governor Quinn contacted the city council and wanted to meet with four of you. Unless the four of you had been gathering as part of a published and properly notified meeting, that would be a violation for you, not for Governor Quinn. On the other hand, if, if he were meeting with the mayors of four different towns, that would be a different issue.
But when he gets together with the four leaders in the House, that's a violation?
Yeah, that, no, the, the state doesn't put themselves to the Open Meetings Act.
Well, they've exempted themselves.
Yeah, yeah.
So this, both the state government and the federal government are exempt?
No, the rest of the legislature are.
Yeah, the, the members of the legislature are.
They're all exempt.
That was nice of them, I know.
I have another question. So let's say there are four of us aldermen, and we are sitting around, and one of us starts to talk on the subject of city business, and the rest of us remain silent.
That won't cut the mustard. I, I would suggest, when I was in law school, I had a professor of antitrust that said, if ever you're in that situation, spill a glass of water so it's memorable that you said something opposing it. So if that starts, whoever else is at the table should all spill their glasses of water.
They, they don't need an excuse to leave when I start talking. But, but it's, it's all right for me to go to our city manager and say, this is my opinion.
You can speak to your city manager to your heart's content.
This is my opinion. I think the other members would be very interested in it.
Yes. And, and the city manager can then communicate that as his communication to the members of the council without a violation.
Formal or substance.
Right.
So only shop in your own ward. Don't go to the store in another minute. You won't have a problem.
So, yeah, and I'm just saying this, and it, it seems kind of ridiculous. If I copy Bob on an email that I have David on, I'm better at doing that than saying anything to Jim to get a third member of this body.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, so, we've talked about...
You know, again, when, when I, if, if I wasn't clear about the, the hub-and-spoke approach, Bob would be the hub, and communications can go from him. And he can then, he can then disseminate that same information as his communication, as opposed to a communication among or from a particular member of the body.
Can he disseminate my, I mean, if I sent him a, an email ranting about something, can he send it out to everyone and say, you know?
Well, the, the best practice would be to delay if he's going to send that, or to simply rephrase it as, I've had a communication with Alderman Grumhouse, and here were the basis of his concerns.
Okay.
But it would still then be his, as opposed to taking your email and forwarding it without either an appropriate delay in time or a re-characterization of it, or rephrasing of it.
Vic, just preparing a clarification, I presume all of these apply to boards and commissions as well. And you wouldn't have a problem with us distributing this to the board and commission, would you?
No, no, I don't.
Because we'll do the same for all of them as well then?
Okay. I, I think, by the way, and I've heard this pitch before from you, Vic, and I think it's very good that we do it on a pretty regular basis, especially for newer aldermen that may not have been through it.
It's something that...
Because I, it's a very good refresher, and it's very important to be up to speed on this. And I work with governments around the country, and I, I can tell you that this is a critically important issue everywhere I go.
And let me just offer a commercial advertisement. We do, on a biennial basis, have a seminar for our clients. Our next one is coming up. We're, we're trying to finalize the date, but I believe it's the last Friday of April, and you'll all be getting notice of that, and you're invited to attend. It's free of charge.
Don't sit together.
Will there be refreshments?
There, there are refreshments, yes.
Yeah, you're right, Bob, we can't sit together.
Is DVD coming out? We have done DVDs in the past. I'm not sure what we're going to do this time.
You just have to hope that Vic doesn't sing.
No, Vic will sing.
Can we march in the parade together?
You cancel, you don't talk business.
You're not talking about city board sports.
Okay. Are there any other issues to come before this group? No other issues. Any opportunity for public comment? Anybody out here for that? Okay, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll start in five minutes.
That does it. No marching together anymore.